Good evening, everyone. My name is Dave Woods and I'm a councillor with the City of Surrey. And right now, I'm the acting mayor, as Mayor Hepner is traveling in China with the premier on a trade mission. So I'd like to welcome you all to Record Council Public Hearing Agenda Meeting. And we'll move, first of all, into the adoptions and minutes.
Move the special regular council October 20th?
Second.
All those in favor? Contrary? Carried.
Move the minutes we received for CIC, October 20th?
Second.
All those in favor? Contrary? Carried.
Move the minutes of land use, October 20th?
Second.
All those in favor? Contrary? Carried.
Move the minutes be adopted public hearing, October 20th?
Second.
All those in favor? Contrary? Carried. And we're moving on now to delegations with regards to the public hearing. So, Madam Clerk.
The first bylaw is zoning amendment bylaw 18536. The addresses are 12871 and 12885 number 10 highway and 12872 59th Avenue. The applicant's Panorama Muse Developments Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from one acre residential to multiple residential 30. Applicant is proposing to develop 80 townhouse units. And in addition, there's a development variance permit being sought to reduce the setbacks in order to retain trees on the site.
Very good. I have listed one speaker, Mr. Jas Sidhu.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Okay, so my first concern...
Could you just speak up a little bit, sir?
Okay. Now, okay?
Yes.
Okay. My first concern, in your map, there is two street going to the out front house. One is the 129th Street, second one is 59th Avenue. This 59th Avenue, still their sidewalk, no street. I tried to last four years, meet too many times councillors, sent two emails. Every time they ask, take a time, I can made a road within months or within six months, but there's still problem. So my concern is, if accident happen on 129th Street, any vehicle accident, and second accident in house, fire or anything, so how your emergency vehicle entering location, where is the fire?
Okay. Mr. Planner? Engineering?
Mr. Chair, 59th Avenue, as well as 129th Street, south of 59th Avenue, was constructed by an earlier development application. There is sufficient road allowance and road width for emergency vehicles to access the community in that neighborhood.
Okay. Does that answer your question, sir?
No. There is only one road, if you close to the 129th, no other road enter to the 200 houses if fire is there.
Mr. Chair, as part of this development application, one of the requirements for servicing the site is for an extension of 59th Avenue between 128th Street to 128A.
Okay, does that answer your question, sir?
No. And my second concern, if no road over is there, why is road showing on the map is 59th Avenue?
Mr. Chair, that section of 59th Avenue, east of 128th Street, was dedicated as road allowance by a previous application. As part of this application, the servicing, or that portion of 59th Avenue, will be constructed to a half-road standard within that dedicated road allowance.
So my question, how long you guys take to the time to clear this road attached to the 59th Avenue to the 128th Street?
Did you understand that, sir?
Mr. Chair, we will be working with the developer, as well as his engineer, to complete the servicing design, and after that, the construction will take place.
Same answer, I'm listening for last four years. So how long you guys take the more time?
Well, you know what? A lot depends on the development, sir.
So any rough idea, is years or 20 years?
Is that possible to answer? No?
Any rough idea? I'm not asking exact weeks, months.
Mr. Chair, perhaps the applicant or their agent is present who might be able to address that question?
Very good. Okay, so we're gonna get the applicant or the agent to address the question. There's somebody holding their hand up, and I believe they're here.
I'm Doug Johnson.
Very good, sir. You are?
I'm Doug Johnson, I'm the architect on the project.
Very good, sir.
The intent is to proceed straight ahead with the project, so I would anticipate they should be able to be completed in relatively short order. So I would think over the next, certainly, we're looking at about a year's construction, so say within a year and a half, it would be complete.
Can I ask you, sir, to open dialogue with this gentleman?
Absolutely, no problem at all.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, so, are there any other persons that wish to speak to this bylaw? Yes, sir?
Hello?
Name, please, sir?
Gary Austin.
Okay.
First off, I'm a homeowner on 129th Street, between 60th and 59th. Been there for three and a half years. We moved into the neighborhood, it was all single-family homes. All the developments since we moved in has been single-family homes. When the City of Surrey establishes a neighborhood of single-family homes, the precedent for that neighborhood has been set. The neighborhood should remain single-family homes. I have nothing against townhouses, but when a neighborhood has been zoned for single-family homes, there should be no zoning variance granted to drastically change the neighborhood. The other issue, as the other speaker said, is the increased traffic it'll bring. The area between 128th and 132nd, and 60th and Highway 10, has only one road in and out, except for the small lane, east of 12974, 60th Avenue. This is an area that has over 250 homes, and growing, all with unauthorized suites in the basement, and some with coach houses. The density of this neighborhood is already extremely high. Add the cricket park, which was opened in the neighborhood in the past year, which brings even more non-resident traffic in the area, and the fact that fairly recently parking was allowed on both sides of 129th Street, effectively making one lane in and out of the area, and the City of Surrey has created an unsafe environment traffic-wise. I witnessed two accidents, and more than a dozen incidents of road rage since this parking change. Speed has dramatically increased on 129th Street, as mortars try to beat traffic coming at them in the other direction, so you don't have to wait. Morning and afternoons, there can be a half a dozen vehicles lined up at each end, waiting to drive up and down this one lane. The map that the City of Surrey provided for the zoning amendment shows 59th Avenue, like the other speaker said, exiting to 128th. This is untrue. We heard three and a half years ago that they were supposed to open up, and we also heard that the private house that's there would not sell. And the map doesn't show it, but the City of Surrey might also think that 59th Avenue can access 132nd Street, which it does not. The single-stop sign corner at 129th and 60th, and 129th Street cannot handle this amount of traffic, as it is present today, never mind what additional 20 townhome units would add. There should be a halt to all development in this area until 59th Avenue is open at 128th and 132nd Street, to allow safer access and ingress out of this area. Parking on both sides of 129th Street should also be discontinued until a detailed traffic study is completed. Safety must come first before any further development. Developmental greed should never overrun livability and safety. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any speakers? No. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this bylaw? Yes, ma'am? Come forward. Can I ask you to state your name, please?
Harjinder.
What is your name?
Harjinder.
Harjinder. Your last name?
Dylan.
Dunn's?
Dylan.
Dylan.
Yes, so I'm also located on 129th and 59th. We've been there about since 2012 beginning. Parking is a major issue in this street. So they are all single-family homes when we moved in, and the two streets down, like 58A and 58, are bigger homes. They're about 39 square feet. And most of those homes have legal suites, and they have limited parking, because on those streets, there's only parking on one side. So on our seat, on 129th and 59th, that entire 59th Avenue, we get overflow parking from the other two streets. And there's been times when there's like no parking spot, and you drive around. I got a ticket because there was one spot left, and I was one foot too far over the legal limit, and I got a ticket for it. Now with 84 development condos or townhouses you guys are coming up with, there's gonna be no parking. We already have a parking issue to begin with, that's gonna be additional cost. And if, when I came to the City of Surrey, I was told that in the townhomes, they will have visitor parking for all the visitors. But in this economy, where condos and townhomes are going for $300,000, $400,000, I've talked to other condos and townhomes, and I see they have parking issues. Because in townhomes, they're usually one, maybe garage with one side pad, like two cars. But this day and age, families are moving into those places, so they have minimum of two cars. Where's their third car gonna go? If they have visitors, they'll be parking in our streets, where it's already overloaded parking issues. So I don't see how this makes sense in this particular neighborhood. And as the other speakers have said, single-family homes make sense, but 84 new places with double the car issues, I don't see where they're gonna park. And we already have a lot of issues on those streets. Tight. 129th is tight, 59th is tight. I have a little baby, and sometimes in the rain, I have to walk up, block up, just from my own home, where I'm paying over $3,000 income, sorry, tax, to get to my own house, because of parking issues, because what city has allowed on 58th Avenue and 58A. That's all.
Ma'am, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Do you have any parking at your residence?
Yes, I have a double-car garage, and I have a side pad, and we have a legal suite. So you give the side pad to your renter, and one car can go into the double-car garage, because I have SUVs, two of them. And you can't fit two of them into a double-car garage. So technically, I should have a parking spot in front of my house, but with overload parking of the other two streets, sometimes that can get parking. So I end up parking on 58 or 129, somewhere along those lines, and where these new developments are supposed to come in, if they make a full lane from 59th Avenue all the way to 128th, what's gonna happen with the parking spots on both sides? That's another issue. If they get rid of parking, then we have more flow of parking issues. That's a big issue in this neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this issue? Yes, sir?
I'm Doug Johnson, again, the architect. Basically, our project is, we have almost, we only have 15% of the tandem units on this particular project. We do meet all the requirements for visitor parking. In addition, we have approximately 10% of our units which have enough space on their apron to be able to park immediately outside of their unit. In terms of our project, we should be able to easily contain all of our parking requirements on our site, and not impact the streets at all. Also, as part of this project going forward, we are committed to completing the work on 59th, which, again, I think is going to alleviate a lot of the concerns of the neighborhood.
Okay, very good, sir. Anybody else who, sir, you've already spoken, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, sir. Would you come forward, please?
No, not you, sir. We need, there's a gentleman behind you, yeah. Sorry. Yes, sir. Could I state your name, please?
Mike Charner.
Mike?
Charner.
Charner?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm the husband, sir. My wife would just stop here. Like you said, we bought the house in March of 2012. And parking for our side's okay, because we got double-sided, but the previous 58, 58A, there's no parking. They overflow to our side. There are renters that live near the 130th Park, will park. I look at them, and these guys are, they go to me, we can park wherever we want, you can't say nothing to us. I own the house. Too bad, too sad. We can park wherever we want, which is true. If you're a, like, I parked off of 129A, there's no line that says nothing. Next morning, I go out, my truck has a ticket on the windshield. City of Surrey Parking, they're running around like mosquitoes, Sunday morning, just trying to ticket everywhere they can. Put the overflow of the condos in, or townhomes, all that's gonna shut down, it's all gonna come here, then it's gonna benefit for you guys, because you guys are gonna be getting tickets left, right, and center. And I disputed it, and seemed like, okay, you don't respond, we'll see you in a year. But just like, and on 129th, but putting parking on both sides? It's true, you're waiting here, cars are coming racing, there's speed literally everywhere on both roads. You see guys in expensive cars, Range Rovers, you name them, Corvettes, they're just gunning down the streets, and there's no, there's nothing for speed, you know? Like, 30 kilometers? No. Guys who went 50, 60, just running their cars hard, turning left onto 60th Avenue off of 129th? Impossible. You go forward, inch, inch, you look, oh. I've had, I could've got multiple accidents, because guys just zoom down there, and you don't even see left or right. They didn't put a light there, but they put on 60 and 128, which, something must've happened, otherwise they wouldn't have put it. And making 59 accessible to 128, it's just gonna cause more traffic, and, like I said, more people that cause havoc, and do stuff for the local parks, or drug deals, or whatever, just gonna make it way more accessible, and it's just gonna be more chaos for everybody else. Houses have appreciated, but with the condos, they're just gonna start going down. So if they're gonna be up in a year, a year and a bit, I would love to sell before that all happens, because it doesn't make any sense. All that bush is actually better, because there's parking along the side there for overflow for basement renters, right?
Okay, sir. Is that all you've said?
That's all.
Okay, just hang on a minute. Councillor Gill?
Just wanna ask the delegation, just wanna clarify, that you indicated that parking was the primary issue. Given that these townhouses would not have a basement suite, are you not thinking or suggesting that parking would be less of a problem? I just wanna understand your perspective, given that these would be self-contained suites?
Though they won't have suites, I think parking would be more of a problem, because there's gonna be overflow, there's gonna be visitors. Like, for them to meet the criteria for making, for the City of Surrey, this is a parking that's allowed for visitors, they're okay, but there's gonna be overflow coming on the streets. Like, right now, sometimes, I got two, three, sometimes trucks or whatever, and I keep my car in the garage. I sometimes park my car, literally, just to keep my area open, or play, you know, musical chairs with the cars, get one in, get one out, just so I got a space to swap around. That's how bad it's gotten. My dad guys live two blocks behind me, and basically, they sometimes say, oh, do you have parking on your side? Just because, and if you park a little bit, you know, here and there, City of Surrey tickets you. There's no questions asked, they just run around, Sunday mornings, I've seen them, call on security, just ticketing. They're like mosquitoes. They just run around, give tickets. What can someone do? Nothing, because there's no parking. Instead, they keep flooding, and flooding, and flooding. They made a dog park, that's good. They made a park, that's nice. But at the end of 130th, when those houses are all developed, because there's a lot of empty lots there, where are those people gonna go? I'm still happy that 59th, where we are, is sometimes empty, but when it's full, it's because of other people's renters are parking in front of our house now, too. If the city made it in front of my house, this is the address, you're parking, you guys take enough money for property taxes as it is, charge me 60 a year, and nobody else can park there, and you get a tag or something? Hey, that's better, just like Vancouver will make a permit parking lot.
If I may, just to engineering staff, just to confirm that the particular project fully complies with our visitor parking? There's no DVP on the parking, correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct. There's sufficient visitor parking provided.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this bylaw? Yes, ma'am? Please come up. Please state your name.
Nancy Aslan.
Okay, Nancy.
Again, for me, it's that safety issue. In my opinion, I would love to see one-sided parking on 129th Street in front of my house, just so there'd be two lanes of traffic being able to leave the area. Secondly, it's my understanding that on 59th, where the developer wants to extend that road, that's private property. Is he planning on expropriating that from the homeowner to make 59 an open road? Because it's private property, in my understanding. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishes to speak on this matter? First call. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and council. Mike Comter, I'm the engineer on the project.
Yes, sir.
So if I can address some of the questions that were raised tonight. I think the biggest issue we have is growing pains. This is a new area, it's just developing. So a lot of the roads haven't been built yet, and they're in the process of going through that construction process. So just to follow up, on 59th Avenue, the plan is to extend 59th Avenue, where we see at the top-left corner of the drawing, out to 128th Street. The property has been dedicated, there is a private property on the south side, so the road will be constructed, basically, the north half of the road would be constructed through to 128th Street. In terms of timing, obviously, the developer is looking to move forward as quickly as he can. The sooner this project is approved, the sooner the road would be constructed. As the architect mentioned, it does take time to design, construct things, so it may take up to a year to build that road. In addition, the project will be expanding 129th Street on the east side of the project, where you see the hatched portion along the west side of 129th Street. So currently, 129th Street is not built to its ultimate standard, where the pen is shown, or from the driveway entrance to the south end of the street. So that will be widened, parking will be available on that side of the street. Currently, it's not the full width of the road, so as some of the speakers have noted, it is difficult getting through there at this time. So with this project, they will extend, widen the rest of 129th Street down to, I believe, 58A Avenue. With regards to the land use, again, the land use is something that has been in place well before any of these single-family property owners moved into the neighborhood. What we're proposing here is, in compliance with the NCP, we're not asking for any higher density or any other use. As mentioned, the visitor parking will be provided to meet the bylaw, we're not asking for any relaxation on the site parking of the project. I think those are sort of the key questions that were raised. If there's any other questions that I can answer?
I see none, sir, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very much. So again, first call, it was regards to, are there any more speakers? Second call, are there any more speakers? Third call, are there any more speakers? No? Madam Clerk?
Next bylaw is zoning amendment bylaw number 18537. The address is 14088 58A Avenue. The applicants are Surjit, Gosol, and Harvinder Gill. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from one acre residential to single-family residential, and single-family residential 12. The applicant's proposing to subdivide into seven single-family building lots.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I have no one listed to speak to this matter, and I, we have one written opposition to the matter. So, first call, is there anyone who wishes to speak to this matter? Second call, is there anyone else wishes to speak to this matter? Third call, is there anyone wishes to speak to this matter? No? Madam Clerk?
Next bylaw is zoning amendment bylaw 18533. The address is 7020 192nd Street and 19265 70th Avenue. The applicants are 1045125 B.C., Limited, and Rajwinder and Subjinder Johal. The applicant's seeking to rezone the site from one acre residential to multiple residential 30. Applicant is proposing to develop approximately 49 townhouse units.
Very good.
In addition, sorry, in addition, there's a development variance permit being sought to reduce the setbacks in order to allow for a better public frontage-oriented units along the street-facing property lines.
Thank you very much. I have no one registered to speak to this matter. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this matter? First call. Second call, if anyone wishes to speak to this matter? Third and final call, does anyone wish to speak to this matter? We have one written opposition to this matter. Madam Clerk, let's go to the one before.
Zoning amendment bylaw 18534. The address is 3399 189th Street. The applicant is 0988150 B.C., Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from comprehensive development to comprehensive development. The applicant is seeking to allow for an office warehouse facility with outdoor storage of construction equipment, material and supplies, and ancillary truck refueling station.
Thank you very much. I have no one listed to speak to this matter, and we have no written opposition to it. First call, if anyone wishes to speak to this matter? Second call, if anyone wishes to speak to this matter? Third and final call, if anybody wishes to speak to this matter? Madam Clerk?
We have zoning amendment bylaw 18535. The address being 19082 16th Avenue. The applicant is 682466 B.C., Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from general agriculture to cemetery. The applicant is proposing to develop a cemetery on the site.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I have two people signed up to speak to this matter, and we have one written concern. First person, Carmela Sandhu.
My name is Carmel Sandhu, and I reside at 19037 16th Avenue, Surrey, with my family, which is just across the street to the left of the proposed cemetery site. My family and I have lived at this home for over nine years, and we strongly oppose this application. We believe that a cemetery of this size, in the proposed proximity, will have a large negative impact on the market value of our home and property. We are actively attempting to sell our home and property, and believe that this will be a very large deterrent for potential buyers. We believe that members of certain communities would not purchase land across the street from a cemetery for cultural reasons. In fact, we already had one seller back out of a contract, and we believe that the cemetery proposal was a major factor in that. A cemetery is not something we want to live across. If our home does not sell, we remain at this property. We don't want our children growing up scared to go outside to play in the front yard. Our grandmother suffers from severe depression brought on by the death of a close family member. She's currently on various medications to help with this. When she is able, she likes to walk her property, because it's fairly large. We try to keep the mood happy and light around her. Having a graveyard across the street will not help. For some people, including us, it is morbid sad, and sometimes very frightening. When we purchased the home nine years ago, we were aware that there was a small cemetery further down the street, where there are no residential homes across the street or next door. It is hidden from the street, and because of its size and location, does not have an impact on our day-to-day living. We would never have purchased our home if we knew that there was a potential for the cemetery lands to grow larger in size, and sit almost directly across the street from our property. Note that in the planning and development report dated October 20th, 2015, that was online, the report states that the land is vacant across the street of the proposed site. This is incorrect. My neighbor's house sits right across from the cemetery lands, and it's just to have a property east of our property. This is not a gas station or a grocery store, it is a cemetery, and you have to make a real conscious decision if you want to live across the street from one. We did not choose to live across the street from the cemetery, we don't want one across the street, and do not deem it very fair that we'd be forced to live across one. The nursery, which is being converted into the cemetery, has been on the market for a few years. We also don't feel that it's very fair that our market value be at risk to help the owners of the nursery make a dollar. The enjoyment of our property will be affected if the proposed application is approved. We ourselves are struggling with the loss of our father from last year. We don't need the daily reminder of death from across the street. Lastly, we do have concern about the green burial services being mentioned in the applicant's proposal, and the possible contamination and impact of our well water, as well as the traffic congestion. The current cemetery sits on a very busy stretch of 16th Avenue. It sits on a major intersection of 192 and 16th, with very heavy, large traffic. I can't count how many times 16th Avenue's been closed within that stretch for fatalities due to trucks, night, there's not division when it's raining, it's not very good in the area, there's no lighting. It's just, it's closed almost all the time because of a fatality. And I'm sure that even the acting mayor and councillors would agree that living across the cemetery would not be a joyous experience. I urge the acting mayor and the councillors of the City of Surrey to listen to those residents that would be negatively impacted by this proposal. I implore you not to approve this application, as it will affect our lives in such a negative way. At the end of the day, it is our home and our livelihood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Speakers, the next speaker I have is Harjinder Koo. Hi, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Harginder, and I live on one nine zero five five Sixteenth Avenue. Again, with the, with the thing like the, the price of the house, well, property will fall aggressively over the time, but my main concern, when we bought the house twelve years ago, you buy a house for your family. You have your own family, you have extended family, you have grandchildren. To me, that's not the environment I want my grandchildren being put up in. They have a great time, they're up and down that yard, and Sixteenth is so narrow that they will be constantly seeing these cars going in and out, and I really honestly don't want to explain to them that this is why these cars, black cars, white cars, whatever cars, are going in and out of that property. It's, it's just not healthy. I know it's just the two houses, but it's just not healthy. I feel that it should be there, mainly because Sixteenth, maybe there is a way if they go back further, but Sixteenth being the weight is, it's just not, I don't see it being fair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Okay. First call for anyone else who wishes to speak to this matter? Second call for anyone else who wishes to speak to this matter? Third and final call for anybody who wishes to speak to this matter? Madam Clerk.
Zoning amendment bylaw one eight five three eight. The address is one five six two five and one five six five one Mountain View Drive, twenty-nine sixty, twenty-nine eighty-two, one hundred and fifty-sixth Street. The applicant is T.M. Crest Homes Two Thousand and Seven Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from one-acre residential to comprehensive development. The applicant is proposing to develop a sixty-six unit townhouse project.
I have no one registered to speak to this matter, and we have three written opposed submissions. So, first call for anyone who wishes to speak to this matter? Second call. Sir, oh, okay. Second call for anyone who wishes to speak to this matter? Third call for anyone who wishes to speak to this matter? Madam Clerk.
Zoning amendment bylaw one eight five four zero. The addresses are one six 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 eight, one six seven four six, and one six seven seven four Edgewood Drive, and one sixty-six forty-five, and seventy-seven Twenty-First Avenue. The applicants are Edgewood Properties Incorporated, Shamkur, and Sarabjit, Sandu, Timothy and Nancy Saxon, Gerdip and Tijinder Othal, and the Dublin Homes. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from one-acre residential to single-family residential ten and single-family residential twelve. The applicant is seeking to subdivide into forty-five single-family lots. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the lot with, for lots one and twenty-five in order to allow for a five-meter-wide drainage corridor.
Okay, thank you. I have no one registered to speak to this matter, and we have received one written letter, email actually, in opposition. So, first call, if anyone wishes to speak to this matter? Second call, if anyone wishes to speak to this matter? Third call, if anyone wishes to speak to this matter? Madam Chair, or Madam Clerk, sorry.
Zoning amendment bylaw one eight five three nine, and the address is one five four six three Ninety-first Avenue. The applicants are Mohinder and Kullwinder Joe Hall. The applicant is seeking to rezone a portion of the site from single-family residential to comprehensive development. The applicant is proposing to subdivide into two single-family lots and retain the existing house on proposed lot two.
Thank you very much. I have no one registered to speak to this matter, and I have no written correspondence on this matter. First call, if anyone wishes to speak to this matter? Second call, if anyone wishes to speak? Third and final call? Thank you very much, thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and that closes the public hearing portion of this agenda. At this time, I would like to recognize that in the audience, Ms. Carla Stewart, who is a senior planner with the city of Surrey and also teaches a course at Langara College in Applied Planning and, Planning and Process class, that her students are present in the chamber, so I'd like to welcome you to the city of Surrey. Thank you. So, we're moving on to committee reports to be received. Item number one.
I'd like to move Investment and Innovation Committee, June first, minutes to be received?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move the Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee, minutes July twenty-second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
I'd like to move the Agriculture and Food Security Advisory Committee?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move the recommendation be adopted?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move the minutes be received for Public Safety Committee, September fourteenth?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move the minutes of Park, Recreation, and Sport Tourism Committee, September sixteen?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
And move the recommendations be adopted?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move the minutes be received for Surrey Heritage Advisory Commission, September sixteen?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
And move the recommendation be adopted?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Mayor's Proclamations. I have two proclamations here that I'll be reading. One is World Diabetes Day on the fourteenth of November. Whereas diabetes is a serious condition affecting more than three million people worldwide, including three million Canadians, many of our fellow residents of Surrey and their families living with this disease. And whereas, in two thousand and fifteen, World Diabetes Day has become a year-long campaign to reflect the realities of people living with diabetes. The campaign will focus on healthy eating as a key factor in the fight against diabetes and a cornerstone of global health and sustainability development. And whereas, more of us will develop and live with type-one diabetes. While type-one diabetes cannot be prevented, a healthy lifestyle is an important part of effective management of the disease. And whereas, a healthy lifestyle would prevent up to seventy percent of type-two diabetes. Healthy eating can help reduce risk. And whereas, encouraging healthy eating habits in young children is key to halting the rise of the diabetes epidemic. By ensuring the health of future generations, we take a step towards ensuring sustainable development. And whereas, the United Nations General Assembly has designated the World Diabetes Day, November the fourteenth, as an official United Nations World Health Day to recognize the diabetes epidemic. And therefore, it be resolved that I, Dave Woods, do hereby declare November the fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, as World Diabetes Day in the city of Surrey. Second proclamation relates to Adoption Awareness Month. Whereas, adoptive families in British Columbia provide children with love and the support of a permanent family. Whereas, the city of Surrey wishes to recognize the care, compassion, and selfish commitment of British Columbia's adoptive families. And whereas, there continues to be a need for adoptive families to nurture the growth and development of children, especially those with special needs because of the physical, mental, or emotional disabilities. And whereas, there is a need to remind citizens during this time that there are many children and sibling groups in the province who are available for adoption. Now, therefore, it is therefore resolved that I, Dave Woods, do hereby declare November two thousand and fifteen as Adoption Awareness Month in the city of Surrey. Very good. Moving on. Let's move on to corporate reports.
I'll move the recommendation on R. two-ten, acquisition of property.
Second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move corporate part R. two-one-one, acquisition of property at one six six zero four Twenty-Fourth Avenue, further south, Brooks Yards.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move corporate part R. two-one-two, acquisition of property at four five seven one seventy-two Street for Parklands.
Second.
All, yes, yes, um.
I just want to mention that the property that we're acquiring is actually adjacent to the Glades Gardens. And I know the owner of the Glades Gardens has been long lobbying the city to acquire this property. And after visiting the Glades, which is a beautiful piece of property with wonderful floral gardens, I think this is a fabulous acquisition, because it will protect the Glades from any imposition of building structures, but also allow a better parking situation for the public to be able to enjoy this fabulous amenity. So I'm very happy to see this acquisition.
And just to confirm there, councillor Villanueva, you're referring to R. two-one-two?
That's correct.
At four five seven one seventy-second Street. Madam Clerk, did we vote on that yet?
No.
No? Okay, secondor, we've got a secondor, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Moving on to legal.
Move corporate part R. two-one-thirteen, the Fraser Valley Intermunicipal Business License Program.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move corporate part R. two-one-four, the Metro West Intermunicipal Business License Program.
Second.
All those in favor? Yes, go ahead, sorry.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair. On both of these, the Fraser Valley Intermunicipal Business License Program and the Metro West Intermunicipal Business License Program, I just want to comment on, on how successful the pilot's been. These two corporate reports are speaking to, to making these two, these two licenses permanent in nature. And for those of you not familiar with it, this allows people working in the trades, primarily, to get a business license in one jurisdiction, be a plumber, or an electrician, or, or any of the other red seal certified trades, to work in a number of different municipalities that are participating in this. And it reduces red tape, it reduces costs for primarily in many independent contractors, and it's just great to see that the pickup on both of these programs, these pilot programs, has been very, very good, and, and very pleased to see it turning into a, a permanent program. So, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Excellent, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, did we vote on two fourteen?
No.
Nope. Okay. We have a secondor. Yep. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move corporate part R. two-fifteen, funding request for the two thousand and fifteen Social Innovation Summit.
Second.
Vera wants to speak.
Very good, go ahead there, cons.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to mention before we vote that I'm so pleased to be chairing the Social Innovation Summit this year, along with Stephen Dooley from SFU Surrey, and I would like to say a couple of words and just mention that this is really building on some of the work that has happened over the last few years. We've had really successful community summits, and those community summits were really well-regarded and well-attended. And so the Social Innovation Summit is really meant to build on that. And some of the feedback that we got from the community summit was that people would like more of a fine-tuned focus. And so social innovation is really going to help us to define what social innovation means to Surrey, and it's sort of taking the community summit up one notch, inviting in, in particular, business, and building on the innovation that we've done in Innovation Boulevard, and sort of that Surrey sensibility of really being innovative in all we do. And the community summit was really meant to look at some of the big-ticket problems that we have in Surrey that we'd really like to solve, and we really want to solve them in a unique and unusual way. So I really appreciate your support on this.
Very good. So, we need to call a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Planning and Development.
I'll move the recommendation on R. two-one-six for Bolivar Park Neighborhood Extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Dave wants to speak.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And it's, it's come to our attention as well that in, there are more, in fact, families that, or more houses that want to be included in this extension area. So I know that there's going to be even more interest from the, from the local community in this neighborhood extension area, and already the petition has garnered over ninety percent approval from the local residents, so we can expect to see that this area growing even, even in size from here. So that's, that's very interesting to see, and I'll be supporting it.
Very good. Call a question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
I'm going to remove R. two-one-seven for Quome Point Park Neighborhood valuation for extension of that CD zoning.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move corporate part R. two-eighteen, Stratotitle Conversion of the Commercial Building Located at five six five Landmark Way.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
And on table, Mr. Chair, we've got corporate part R. two-one-nine, the Brooksdale Estate at one nine three five three Sixteenth Avenue, application for financial assistance in the amount of fifteen thousand eight fifty-nine sixty-six.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Moving on to bylaws. Business arising out of the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to move third reading on each one.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Just on this proposal, there, there, the big concerns seem to be congestion, parking, and access. And though, you know, it's part of the NCP, and it's an area in transition, I think it might be helpful if someone in staff could look at sort of what the parking issue is in that area if this moves forward for construction, just so that people that are living in the area are not facing what they mentioned, which is continual parking tickets. So whether we need to create some temporary parking while that goes on, I think it's an issue that we shouldn't ignore, and we should try to assist in that transition.
Anybody else, councillor?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and I was pleased to hear that the, the proponent's saying that, I've heard him correctly, and I read my report, that only fifteen percent of this development would be tandem parking, because I think certainly tandem parking has proven, over time, to, to aid to, or to attribute to congestion, and, and certainly with, with having side-by-side parking in this, in this project, along with a lot of, a lot of the units being able to as well park on their apron, that I think, I think a lot of those parking fears may be alleviated. And certainly, as I think councillor Gill pointed out during the, during the public hearing, basement suites in, in small lot, single-family homes is contributing more to on-street parking, from what we've seen, than from townhouse complexes, particularly those without a lot of tandem parking. So I think the way this is designed, and with it, with the road being extended through, I think, I think a lot of that will, will alleviate some of those problems, so I'll be supporting it.
Very good. Thank you. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
And also on one, that council supports the issuance of the DVP seven nine one five zero zero three eight zero zero on final adoption of the related bylaw.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third reading on two.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third reading on three.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On three, move that council supports the issuance of the DVP seven nine one five zero one six one zero zero on final adoption.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On four, move third reading.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Five. Move third on five.
Second.
All, yes.
Mr. Chair, just again, I don't have issue with the, the proposed land use, but I did have concern in, in land use in terms of contamination, and that's not where I'm going to go today, but certainly, I just wanted to understand from engineering, given the site, I understand that burials will be happening until the site is full, is that correct? On the site?
We're speaking with regards to number five, the cemetery?
Yes.
Okay.
What I'm trying to establish is that will there be ceremonies that will be happening as the burial plots fill up? And where would those vehicles be parked? Just want to better understand what the applicant has been proposing. I noted that the applicant did not speak on behalf of this application.
Okay. Could we have engineering answer that, please?
Mr. Chair, through you to councillor Gill, the understanding is that there will be some level of services held on-site, but they would be kept small. There will be no crematoriums on the site. We could certainly... We could certainly look into further details as to what specifically is proposed with respect to the traffic.
Um, Mr. Chair, and I know that in many different religions that, that sometimes functions such as burials do become very significant in terms of turnout. I'm really just wanting to better understand whether the site can accommodate the guests that would be coming to a funeral. I'm not in a position to support this particular project tonight, but certainly I'd like to send back to staff and have the applicant provide those details in terms of how, how they'd be accommodating the onsite guests in terms of this, this particular amenity.
Okay, we're going to let councillor Steele speak.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. First of all, I recognize that in some cultures, living across from such a, such a place as a cemetery is, is considered incredibly bad luck and just not acceptable. And so from hearing from people, I do understand that that sentiment is there, however, I'm not sure what really can be done about it in the long term. The one thing I would ask, that I would assume it would just be small graveside services that are held here with maybe two or three family members, and that would be about it. And I'm not seeing any heads nod, so I guess it will come back with councillor Gill's report if that, if that so passes. And the other thing I ask, I've never heard the term "green burial" before. Is that something different that we're not aware of? I mean, the, the, the subject of contaminating the ground just has not occurred to me because that's certainly not acceptable in, in burial in, in the city that I know, or in the country that I know. So "green burial" is a new expression for me. Does anybody have any clarification as to what that might be?
Very good. Councillor Gill?
Mr. Chair, again, I was moving that we send this back to staff to get that additional information in terms of how this particular project would accommodate guests and what we could expect in terms of how that would be managed. We, we know that 16th Avenue doesn't have a shoulder, I believe, and it doesn't have the ability to support off-site parking, so I'm just concerned with that context. And again, I just want to reiterate that I don't have an issue with the land use, but, but certainly those are my concerns.
Okay, do we have a second or on a motion?
To second, to send it back?
Yes.
Yes.
Second, okay. The motion is to send it back to staff. All those in favor?
For those questions answered.
Opposed?
Okay.
Therefore, if it passes, it'll move back to staff. Very good. Number six.
Move third on six.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on seven.
Second. All, all those in favor, you wish to speak, councillor?
No.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On seven, also move that council supports the issuance of the DVP 7915004600 on final adoption of the related bylaw.
Second. All those in favor, opposed?
Move third on eight.
Second. Carried. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Permits and approvals.
On nine, move that the DVP 7915026300 be approved.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 10, move that council supports the issuance of the DVP 7915014600. If supported, the DVP will be brought forward for issues of execution in conjunction with the final approval of the associated DP.
Okay, second or no?
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption on number 11.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption on 12.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On number 13, introductions and first.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On number 14, move first.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On number 15, move first.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Clerk's report.
Move 1A for councillor Hain to attend the fifth annual summit on public consultation and engagement being held at, in Toronto.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Notice is a motion, I don't believe we have any. Any new other business? I don't believe we have any. Madam Clerk, will you move?
You can move adjournment then, as to.
I'll move to adjourn.
Thanks.
Second. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, everyone. That concludes the public hearing agenda for this evening.